Hey guys, welcome to Patriot Muscle Health. My name is Chrissy Smith and it's easy to define muscle by looking at someone physically, but it also requires someone to be strong mentally, emotionally, and spiritually. So this channel is going to touch a little bit on that. And I'm very excited to have our guest today. Her name is Chrissy Pratt. She is running for District 2 School Board. And I've invited her to discuss some questions that I have about her platform, what she thinks the biggest issue is facing our children. As a teacher of Guilford Tech, I'm very interested in improving our schools as a state House representative because I see the product of Guilford County Schools. And I would like for them to put the resources where they need to be put, which is to produce a quality student. A lot of the students that we are getting right now at Guilford Tech are just not prepared. You know, they cannot communicate effectively either through writing or communicating verbally. And also there's been an increase in the type of classes that they have to have for remedial math and remedial English. So anyway, I've invited Chrissy Pratt to discuss her platform today. So welcome. And she spells her name without the H and I spell mine with the H. So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for school board.
So thank you so much for having me Chrissy. I really appreciate it. So I am a lifelong educator. I have spent my entire career in the education field in one way or another. I was a classroom teacher. I taught fifth, sixth, and seventh grades, almost every single subject. Got my bachelor's degree, sorry, in elementary education, my master's degree in instructional technology. And then I also became a National Board Certified Teacher, which is the highest level of certification that teachers can have as a middle childhood generalist, covers grades or ages about nine to 13. So those middle grades are really my area of expertise, although I have dealt with everything from kindergarten to high school. I left the classroom in 2009 after getting divorced.
How many years did you teach?
About 10 years.
Okay. And was this, I know you came down from DC.
I did. My very first year teaching, I grew up in Maryland. And I'd always wanted to move to North Carolina for some strange reason. And I graduated from college and thought this is the perfect time to go out into the world and hooked up with a company called the Southern Teachers Agency that placed teachers. And ended up in Ahoski, North Carolina, which is over on the eastern side of the state, teaching seventh grade down there. Stayed down here for a year and then ended up going back to Maryland and teaching there outside of Washington DC.
Okay.
Yep. And it's probably important to point out that the schools that I taught in, both here and up in Maryland, were very low income schools, high poverty rates, high rates of free and reduced lunch, a lot of gang activity in the neighborhoods of the schools that I taught in, a lot of issues with the parents, single parent households, parents coming to school drunk or high or all sorts of things. Very little parental support of those students in those schools. And the schools that I worked in in Maryland also were failing schools. They had been classified by the state as failing and were going to be taken over by the state education system if they didn't make improvements. And so one of the things in my background that I think really is a great asset for me running for the board is that I was the Chair of the School Improvement Committee, where we developed, we worked closely with the state. We came up with a plan for how are we going to improve these schools? Instructionally, from a safety point of view, from a behavior point of view, and developed that plan and then implemented it to get those students where they needed to be. So I have a lot of experience with taking schools that aren't fabulous and turning them into something that's a lot better.
Okay. What do you think is the biggest issue facing Guilford County Schools?
So right now, I believe that there are many, many issues. I think the biggest one is the academic performance of our students, which I think is directly tied to discipline. If you look at the test scores that are published by the state and by the county, you will see that our test scores before COVID were not good. And after COVID, they're even worse. This past year, we had just under 40% of our students passing the end of year reading tests, meaning we have students who are not able to read. They're not functionally literate and ready to go out into the world. And even more distressing, the Math 1 exam that was given, which is basically Algebra 1 course. We had 8% of our students here in Guilford County pass that test. And I mean, I don't even have to say how terrible that is. That, you know, we have just such a tiny percentage of our students who are proficient in math. We are really failing our kids. And I think a lot of this goes back to what's happening in the classrooms, which is the discipline policy that we have here in the county is not being enforced. And it has a lot of loopholes that are allowing students to get away with behaviors repeatedly, which are distracting from the instruction in the classroom. And so, for example, a student can get into a fight in the classroom. It can be witnessed by the teacher or another staff member. The teacher writes it up. They have a computerized system that they write it up in. It goes to administration of the school. And very often, either the teacher will hear nothing back and so they don't know what happens, or the consequences for the student are that nothing happens. The student is not suspended. They're not removed from the classroom for any period of time. There's just nothing that happens to them. They do have the option, if they are suspended, to appeal that. And from what we're hearing, those appeals are happening very regularly. And suspensions are being denied by the Office of the Superintendent and the superintendent's designee who works on the suspensions. I've been told by many teachers and administrators across the county, as I've had a lot of conversations over the last six months or so, that they are being unofficially told, do not suspend students because it makes our numbers look bad to have a lot of suspensions. And so what's happening is that the students know they can get away with whatever they want and the behaviors are escalating very rapidly. And so to give a basic example, if you caught a student smoking in the bathroom, there would normally be consequences for that type of thing. But with no consequences, the student now knows they can get away with smoking in the bathroom. And so the next day, you might have five students smoking in the bathroom because they know that their friend got away with it. And those five students get away with it. And before you know it, you've got a group of 10 students smoking in the bathroom. But now they're not smoking cigarettes. They're smoking pot because they've gotten away with these littler behaviors leading up to this. And that's exactly what's happening in the classrooms. The teachers have had their authority stripped from them. They don't feel supported by administration, which is why a lot of them are leaving. And there is massive disruption in the classrooms that is preventing the teachers from being able to teach. Fights have become really glorified by the students here in GCS because of this. Almost every middle and high school has a fight page on Instagram, where they video and upload fights that are happening in their school for likes and for fun. And it's become a form of entertainment for them to see, you know, how many likes can this video of this fight get? It's just, just the wrong direction for these poor kids. They need routine. They need structure. You know, this is sort of a basic parenting principle, is setting routines and structure for your children. And they need the same thing in school. And when they see that they can get away with everything, their focus is no longer on education. They don't care. And it's not all the kids.
Well, that's proven. I mean, look, they had an 8% graduation, not graduate, I mean, 8% math pass rate. But they graduated 91%. And so they aren't proficient. And it's like, how can a student learn if they don't have a safe learning environment or all these distractions that really don't help them learn?
And the teachers are afraid. They're afraid for their own physical safety because of what's happening in the classrooms. That's another reason that a lot of them are leaving. You know, we're seeing a huge exodus. I went through the personnel reports, which are published on the GCS website, along with the board meeting minutes. And I went through those for the past three years. We have about 9,000 employees here in GCS. And in the last three years, we've lost 3,000 employees.
Oh my gosh. And is this, this is faculty and staff? So this is cafeteria workers? This is resource officers? This is bus drivers?
Yep. Yeah. And a huge percentage of them are teachers. I didn't drill down into those numbers exactly. The 3,000 kind of, kind of got me. I mean, that's a third of our staff that we've had turnover in, which is another issue that's happening in the schools. You know, you've got the teacher turnover, but then you also have principals and vice principals who are being moved from one school to another for a myriad of reasons. Sometimes it's done literally as punishment for them. If downtown doesn't like something a principal's done, they're going to move them from school A to school B. And you know, when you think of a good school and some of the qualities that it has, one of the things that you often hear is, you know, my child had the same teacher as their older brother had, or the principal has been there for 10 years and really, you know, has developed a sense of community in the school. And when you have all of this turnover and administration being moved from, from one school to another, you don't have that opportunity to really be able to develop that cohesive community, family feel for the school that really helps add to, to just the general environment.
The character of the school and yeah, the pride in the school.
Exactly.
Yeah. So I know that there's a bond issue with the $1.7 billion bond. It's supposed to be on the primary this year. So what is that money supposed to be used for? Because I know not only are they trying to ask for this, but they got $300 million, was it last year or was it?
Two years ago, I believe.
Two years ago, okay. And then they also get the lottery money. And so I think that that was like $87 million also at the same time. So can you tell me some of the things that maybe that money was used for? And also what they're trying to do, the $1.7 billion bond on? I mean, I know a few of the things, which is the administrative offices in 2020 were redone. And I'm like, how did that fix our schools? Because I mean, how did that help with the fight issue? How did that help improve test scores?
Right.
You know, that's one thing. And then I heard about the 10 SUVs that were ordered. I don't know what the price tag is on that, but if they're $50,000 each, you know, you can do the math about how much that cost. So tell me some of the things that you know that the money has been used for or what they are trying to use the money for.
So there are so many pieces to this puzzle and it would take us hours to go through all of them. But I'll try to break down a couple of them for you. So the $300 million bond that came out a couple of years ago was supposed to be used on planning and rebuilding, building of some new schools here in Guilford County. Those are literally still in the design process. We've spent about 40 million of that 300 million on design only. We still haven't purchased all the land for those schools. We have not broken ground on anything yet. Although I do believe we're supposed to break down, break ground on some in July or so of this year. But that money is, is just sort of sitting at this point and hasn't been spent on these new schools. $40 million on design, sounds like a lot of money to me.
Yeah.
It really does. I understand that there are a lot of pieces that have to go into it with, you know, finding architects and doing land studies to make sure they actually can use the land that they've purchased. And I've heard that not all of those studies have been done to figure out drainage, things like that. So there's a lot of work still left to be done before they can begin building that. The lottery money, so as you know, we have a North Carolina Education Lottery. I go and buy lottery tickets all the time. I figure I'm supporting the schools when I do it. And the state tells the counties how that money is supposed to be used. And there's a breakdown that comes of, you know, it's a certain amount can go to GTCC, a certain amount goes to the public school. And what is happening with the money is that that lottery money is currently being used based on a verbal agreement between the county commissioners and the Board of Education to pay down previous bond debt.
That's not what it was used for.
That, that's what they're.
That's not what it's supposed to be used for.
But it's not what it's supposed to be used for. Now, when you, when you dig in, it is allowable for that money to be used to pay down debt if and only if there are no capital building needs in the county. Well, we know that the county is asking for $1.7 billion to maintain schools, renovate, build new schools, do all sorts of things. Certainly seems to me, we have some capital maintenance funds that we need to be spending. And so that money is not supposed to be used to pay down debt if you have current needs. There are some rules around how it can be spent to do maintenance of buildings. And so for example, if you had a roof that was leaking, you couldn't use, and this is actually a good thing, you couldn't use that lottery money just to patch that hole in the roof. But what you could use it for is to build a new roof for the school. So we could actually be taking that money and maintaining the buildings that we have instead of letting them deteriorate and get into the.
And now you have a bigger problem.
Exactly.
That costs the taxpayers more money.
Exactly. And you know, I've heard a lot about funds being redirected from one account to another. And if, if you watch the board meetings, which I do religiously, in the consent agenda, which happens at the beginning of the meeting, you very often will see that they've moved money from point A to point B or point C to point D. There is almost never any discussion in the meetings about the moving of that money.
That is, why did we vote for a board member if they can't speak on our behalf?
That's a very good question. Very, very good question. You know, we do have a few board members right now, very few, who do ask some of those hard questions. But most of the members of the board that are seated right now just vote yes, move it right along. Sure, let's move money from here to there. And so that's where things happen, like renovating the administration building downtown, spending, you know, thousands and thou, like hundreds of thousands of dollars on redoing the boardroom and decorations and things like that. When that money.
They even have like a metal detector in there and you have to show your ID. And I'm, I'm like, well, what about the safety of our kids? Weren't they supposed to get the one card system? You know, how, how this metal detector and the security guards are protecting a handful of people, which I'm not saying that they don't need protection, but our children do too. And unfortunately, that's the day and age that we live in. So why didn't the money go for the safety and the infrastructure of our schools and only to these administrators?
Well, and that brings up a great point. You know, a lot of things have happened in Guilford County that are innovative and really sound good initially. And the one card that you mentioned is a great example of that. Where we really seem to fall down here is in the implementation of it. And so if you're thinking about the security of a building, you know, basics, the doors should lock once the students are in. They shouldn't be left propped open. They, you know, you need to be able to control access of who comes into the school building. And some schools do that very well and some schools do not. Some schools are using the one card system, which is supposed to be a way of keeping track of where the students are, who's in what building, making sure that that student is allowed to be in that building, tracking them on the school bus. That has been very inconsistent in how it's been implemented. And even the cameras in the buildings. I've talked to a lot of SROs, a lot of teachers. And you know, we've got cameras that are supposed to be watching what's happening and helping us keep our kids safe and helping us figure out what's going on in the schools. And the majority of the cameras don't work or are not even hooked up physically. Like the wiring hasn't been done.
What good does that do?
It does no good.
I mean, if there's a fight in the school and somebody for real got hurt, you would need that evidence there to help make a claim or whatever in court.
Absolutely. And one of the SROs that I talked to described a riot, a literal riot that he had in the parking lot of one of the schools. And I think he said there were maybe 15, 16 kids involved, really, really large.
One officer.
One officer.
One officer.
And there were cameras, but guess what? They weren't working. So he was unable to prove who had been involved in the incident because when you have that many kids and one officer, you obviously can't, you know, detain all of them at once. Not possible. So a lot of the money that we have, you know, should have been directed to implementing one card fully, dealing with the security access issues to the building and making sure that that access is limited. Getting those cameras properly installed, properly hooked up, making sure they're hooked up to recording equipment, if they are actually hooked up. And that money hasn't been done. And that is something that this $1.7 billion bond is supposed to include, is doing all of those safety and security updates.
But I feel like they should have already been doing those. So why should, why should we give them more money if they didn't use the money that they've already received for the things that we wanted? I mean, we have AC problems in schools. We have heating problems in schools. I heard from a parent whose child had gone to school and wore her winter coat for three days straight because it hadn't been cold enough to turn the heat on. And I'm thinking, well, I'm sure the administrative offices had heat. Your child is going to school not only with a mask on, but also with a winter coat on. How can you thrive in an environment like that when you're only thinking about being cold?
Right.
You know?
Kids need to have their basic needs met. You know, you've got Maslow's hierarchy of needs. It's the top. You can't learn when you don't feel safe, when you're hungry, when you're cold, you know, those basic, basic needs have to be met before you can be a successful student in the classroom. It's really critical.
Another question that I have for you is I have seen several videos of material that is available for children in the schools. And after hearing some passages from an excerpt in a book that was available at 10 different schools, I mean, it pretty much was 50 Shades of Grey. Now, if you're at a high school and you want to read that on your own, that's fine. But why is that on our, on our, sorry, I just got a notification there? Why is that type of material available for our schools? And what are you going to do about it? Because I don't think any parent will want their child reading that.
I, I agree completely. And I've seen some of the, the books that I assume are ones that you're talking about, although I've heard there are several out there. So first of all, I am not for banning books. I do not think in general that we should ban literature. Some literature can be very uncomfortable to read. It can have, you know, harsh language. It can have strong adult themes. And I think that in our school libraries, public school libraries, we should have material that is grade appropriate for our students and high interest. And so in general, I'm not for banning books. However, these books that I have seen are straight up, plain and simple. I mean, I read some of the passages out loud to my husband, who turned bright purple as I was reading them. They are very explicit material. And you know, almost all of our kids are under 18.
And if he has a problem hearing that material, how do you think that a child feels hearing that material?
Absolutely.
It's not appropriate.
Yeah, we are literally distributing free to minors in our schools right now, which is not acceptable. And so you ask, what would I do about it? One of the things that I think we need to do is develop an advisory committee around books because not only do we have the issue with, but we also have issues with other books that may not be appropriate in the grade levels that they're available in. We've got some fairly mature themes in some of our elementary schools. And so I think we need to develop a committee made up of parents, teachers and librarians to sit down and review books that could be considered controversial or inappropriate and make recommendations on what to do with those moving forward. So for example, I very strongly feel that the free needs to be removed from the schools, plain and simple, that needs to be out. But for some of the other material that's there, there are a couple of different options. We could develop a bit of a rating system. You know, sort of like we have with movies. Some things are rated, certain people can't check it out. Or develop a system where certain books are kept behind the library desk and the librarian sort of has some control over who gets them, who doesn't. We could have a parent information system where parents can make decisions on, yes, my child can check this book out, or no, I don't want my child checking this out. And I think those are decisions that should be made as a group with an advisory board made up of those people who are really experts. You know, parents want to, want to have an impact on their child's education. They want to know what's happening. They want the communication and transparency. Teachers obviously know what's grade appropriate for their students and are very familiar with the material. And librarians are experts in literature. And so I think putting those three groups together to really take a look at the libraries makes a whole lot of sense. And I think we also need consistency across the libraries within the school system. You know, you mentioned that some of these books are in 10 of our schools. They're not in all of the schools. And so how does that happen? Why were those schools given that material and other schools weren't? We need to dig in and find out that kind of thing.
So another question that I have for you. You mentioned that a lot of decisions seem to just have a checkoff list from the school board. And, and so I was going to see if you think that there is a, it seems like to me, there's a lack of communication between the school board, the superintendent and the community. I heard that she had resigned and, but yet is still working there. So in my experience as being, from being an employee, if somebody resigns, usually, you know, within six weeks, that, that person is gone and replaced or what have you. And then I also heard that the school board found out the same way that the public found out. So is there a solution that you have to this issue of, for a lack of communication between the community, the superintendent and the school board?
Sure. So there are a couple of issues here. One of them is exactly what you said, that most of the school board members found out that the superintendent was leaving in the same press conference that you and I watched, that your viewers watched. They were not told ahead of time. There were one or two board members who did know ahead of time. And you know, the, the current board is sort of in an interesting state. The way that things are supposed to work is that the top of your hierarchy is supposed to be the school board. And then the superintendent is supposed to report to the school board. The school board says to the superintendent, we want to see these particular things happen. And then the superintendent goes out and implements it across the county wherever is necessary. That is not how our current board is working. Our current board is working so that the superintendent is telling the board what to do. And if you have watched any school board meetings, you can predict with almost every single vote, what that vote is going to be before it happens. And it's almost always going to be six to three in the direction of whatever it was that the superintendent wants. I have heard, although I cannot verify, that if school members do not vote or school board members do not vote the way they are directed to vote, that there are repercussions to that and that there are threats to them and they go back and change their votes so that they fall in line with what they're being expected to do. And that's not at all.
That happened, that happened last year.
Yeah.
I, I saw it. And when they, I forgot what issue it was. Was it about the mask? It was about something. I forgot what it was and the person voted against it and then ended up saying, oh, well, I changed my mind and I'd like to have this revisited again. It was not on the agenda. Nobody knew that it was going to be voted on again. And so because one of the people were not there to have their voices heard, it went to whatever the superintendent, superintendent wanted the answer to be.
And you know, that's, that's not how things should work. And, and quite honestly, this sort of ties in with why did I want to run for the board? Because what I see as I watch those meetings is that very obvious agenda where votes are being pushed in a certain direction. And what I don't see is what's the best choice for our students?
Right.
How can we help our kids do better?
Right.
I don't hear that from the board. And you know, as somebody who has spent literally my entire professional career in education, I cannot understand how the top priority of a board of education is not the kids. I just feel so strongly that it needs to be. I just feel so strongly that it needs to be. Um, and so that's why I'm here in this race. So, you know, to sort of go back a little bit to your question, first of all, the Dr. Contreras has held a press conference publicly that said she's accepted a new position and will be starting that position in August. However, she has not submitted her writ, written resignation to the Board of Ed, who, as I said, is, is who she technically reports to.
That's her boss.
That's her boss. And she hasn't officially said in writing, I'm leaving, here's my notice. Um, if you look online, there are North Carolina superintendent searches in general to search for them across the, the state. Her name does not appear. Guilford County does not appear. Um, I know that a significant amount of money, I don't know exactly how much, but money has been spent on, again, trying to figure out how we should look for a new superintendent.
Shouldn't they already know how to look for a superintendent? How many have we had?
You would think so. And, you know, and that money is not being spent on
Our kids.
Search firm, go find this person or on our kids. That too. But, you know, I could see paying money to a executive search form, firm to find a superintendent. But what we're spending time and money doing is let's figure out what search firm we should use. Or let's do a study of, you know, how do we find a new superintendent?
That's a waste.
It's a waste. There's so much waste.
That is not, uh, look at how many kids are not passing math. Look at how many kids are not passing English or can read. That needs to be our main focus, not let's develop a committee to do it. I'm just
Well, and here's another great example. There was a meeting just yesterday of the Guilford County Board of Commissioners where the Board of Education was there asking the county commissioners for more money, not related to the bond that they're asking for. And it was somewhere upwards of thirty million dollars that they're asking for. And some of what they're asking for, I wholeheartedly agree with. They want to give salary increases to teachers. Absolutely on board with that. Our teachers
They should have already done that.
Yes, absolutely. But the one that gets me that seems to have sort of slid under the radar is that that is also part of that thirty or so million. There's five point five million dollars being devoted to phase one of a study of the salaries of our classified staff.
How much is that gonna cost? And who's gonna do the study?
And how many phases are there? This is just phase one. Last I checked, we have an HR department, although I could, can't confirm that because we can't get an org chart from the county to save our lives.
There's no organizational chart?
No, no, we've done, um, actually Freedom of Information Act requests for an org chart and been told one does not exist.
How is that possible?
I have no words.
How do you know who you report to?
Yeah. So I assume that we have an HR department. And, you know, every company that I've ever worked in, the HR department does salary studies. They do comparisons across the nation with people in similar roles and figure out what adjustments to compensation need to be made. That should be something that's being done internally and it shouldn't cost us five point five million dollars for the first phase of this study. We all know our teachers are underpaid. Our classified staff is underpaid.
We don't need to do a study to see how much that they're underpaid.
Exactly. We just need to fix the problem.
Exactly. Well, we are running out of time. We got about ten more minutes left. Um, I want to be respectful of your time. I know you're busy and you got things to do. But is there anything else that you would like to share um, with the listeners today? Or, you know, potential voters that live in District Two?
Sure. Um, so I think two different things, one about myself and one about the bond. Um, I wanted to also just sort of add to my professional experience that I talked about before. You know, I talked about the classroom side of things, but once I left the classroom in, um, two thousand nine, I moved into the world of curriculum development and online education. Um, developed a financial literacy curriculum for Johns Hopkins University, um, which was really, really cool to do. And, uh, then moved into online curriculum development and instructional design, which is really the art of taking what you would use in a brick and mortar classroom and figuring out how to deliver it online to students. Um, and make it engaging and, and figure out the best teaching approach for it. Um, but as I've worked my way up in my career, I've also had the opportunity to hold several managerial roles with that, um, as manager of instructional design, as a senior designer, and also as director of curriculum for a startup um, online school as well. And so in those roles, I had the opportunity to do some other things that really are relevant to the board position. Um, I have hired and fired many people, conducted many, many interviews, done, um, job improvement plans, working with employees who weren't performing well to help them become more successful. Um, I've also done a lot of project planning, a lot of budgeting, a lot of planning types of things, really figuring out how can we do the best possible thing in the shortest time possible with the least amount of money as possible. And I think all of those really, really lend themselves to this role as well. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, you know, it's not just that I've been a teacher, which is extremely important, but I have all this other experience as well. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention about the bond, I had the opportunity to go to a Rotary Club meeting about two weeks ago in Greensboro and listen to Dr. Contreras herself present information about the bond to this company or to, uh, the Rotary members. And one of the things that really stood out to me, somebody in the audience asked a question about the amount of money, the 1.7 billion, and, um, what was the rate gonna be? The interest rate for that? And did it account for inflation? And the answer to the inflation part of it, I found very, very interesting, which is all of the documentation that has been pulled together to come up with that 1.7 billion was done before COVID happened. And as we know, we have had massive increases across the board in, you know, materials. Um, every single piece of the puzzle costs a lot more money than it did two years ago. The inflation rates are through the roof and none of that has been accounted for. And it has been said directly out of her mouth that these numbers are gonna be significantly low and we're gonna have to ask for a lot more money because we can't do everything that's on the list with the 1.7 that we're asking for. So we're asking for money that's gonna take about thirty years to pay off.
Not only are you gonna have to pay it back, but your children are gonna have to pay it off and your grandkids are gonna have to pay it off.
Yeah. And as we've said throughout this whole conversation, there's a lot of wasting of money that's happening. And so I, I really feel like we've got to get a handle on what's being spent and how it's being spent. We've got to stop some of this bleeding and really make sure that our dollars are being focused on our kids. And how can we help our kids become productive citizens? You know, we had our highest graduation rate ever last year, which I can't even begin to understand why, because we're graduating kids who can't read and write.
I mean, and to me, it's like, what are you doing for that student? Because you're setting them up to fail. They're gonna go to another institution. They're gonna have to take remedial classes. They're not gonna be able to accomplish their dreams.
Yeah.
Because they don't even have the foundation in order to be a productive citizen. So what does that say to that student? So now they never pass those remedial classes. They have student loan debt that they have to pay back. And now they don't have the education in order to have a better job. And so they end up living off of welfare. Or they end up being a part of a system or having a job that they don't want. And they never can get out of that. How? That's not producing a good quality student. And that is, that's what's happening.
We're doing such a disservice to them. We are
To the student, to the, to the, um, to the community.
Yeah.
You know, people, I, I get so frustrated sometimes when they don't like, oh, I'm not concerned about what's going on with the schools. I don't have children. I'm like, um, do you have a house?
Right.
Because fifty-five percent of your property taxes go to fund the schools.
Right.
And if you don't care about the future of America, these are going to be the people that are going to be working in your community that are going to be serving you. And I don't mean just serving you, you know, at a bar or serving you, you know, at a restaurant. But these are people that are gonna be working in banking. These are gonna be people that are, you know, trying to, you know, start small businesses.
What about public service, like policemen?
Police officers.
Firefighters.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have kids who just aren't prepared for that. They're not prepared for any type of additional higher learning and they're not prepared to enter the workforce.
And a lot of this requires critical thinking skills.
Yep.
And, you know, we're not teaching that either. It's like memorize, forget. Memorize these words, not sound out these words. So that if you come across a word you don't know, you can see how the syllables are put together.
Yeah.
And you know how to pronounce it.
Yeah, we're not teaching that. We're not teaching any phonics.
No.
Actually, what I heard was we're only teaching phonics when a kid is having trouble reading. Which makes, don't even get me started on that rabbit hole. So.
Well, thank you so much for your time today. I really appreciate everything that you're doing. And before we go, folks, um, I would like to show you Chrissy's website.
And the site is Pratt Word for GCS School Board dot com.
If you go over here to my website where it's grassroots candidates and, uh, you will see the people that I have here. Um, and if you, this is another team member that we have, Tim Andrew. He is working right alongside Chrissy. Weren't you guys just, uh, endorsed by LaRino Times?
We were.
Tell us a little bit about that.
Oh, that was actually a surprise. We hadn't had any direct communications with them, which I think makes it an even more valuable endorsement. You know, it's one thing when you reach out to somebody and say, hey, can you endorse me? Um, but to read in the paper, we've decided to endorse you. Um, really, really exciting. They looked at our backgrounds and they're really excited about the team concept
Exactly.
Of us working together, you know? We've been collaborating for the past over six months already, working to interview people across the county, find out exactly what's happening in the schools and really collaborate and get to know each other before even getting to the board. I think it's, it's so valuable.
All right, guys. Well, you have, uh, Chrissy's information there. It's Pratt for GCS School Board dot com. Please check her out. Donate to her campaign. We got the primaries coming up in a week and a half.
Yeah, here we go.
Her and I both are like, I can't wait till the eighteenth. I'm gonna sleep in.
Exactly. We're so busy, so busy. But I'm so glad that you had me here and gave me this opportunity to, to speak. I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Chrissy. You have a great day.
Bye bye.